Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order the City Council Study Session of June 10th, 2021. The time is 3:02. Due to public health concerns, this meeting will be accessible by phone, by dialing the number we provided on our website, as well as the meeting ID number we've provided. And this is through Zoom. With that, I will go straight to a roll call. Let me get this thing off my screen. Councilmember Aberstall.
Here.
Councilmember Denson.
Here.
Councilmember Frannich.
Here.
Councilmember Heims.
Here.
Councilmember Markley.
Here.
Councilmember Rodenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Woo.
Here.
Great. Everyone's accounted for. This is Mayor Kit Kuhn. From staff, we have City Administrator Bob Larson.
Here.
Public Works Director Jeff Langhelm.
Here.
Finance, I don't see our Finance Director. We probably should have our Finance Director here.
I'll go prompter, Mayor.
Thank you. Our Assistant City Clerk, which I would like to mention, Josh is our interim City Clerk right now, as of an hour from now. So Assistant City Clerk for the moment, Josh Decker. And we have Ashley Emery.
Here.
Great. Who's from Peninsula Financial Consulting. And we have Bree Ellis.
I'm here, I'm just listening.
Okay, great. And with that, we will bring Dave on when he comes. Our discussion items are stormwater revenue study and two is standard Public Works Trust Fund Loan Opportunities. With that, I will acknowledge Dave's presence when he comes, but until then, I would turn over Jeff Langhelm.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Council. Most of you may have heard of or maybe have already had a conversation with Ashley Emery, again from Peninsula Financial Consultants. He's been working with us for, well, for two decades or more now. But most recently helped us with some utility bonds and other tasks about two years ago, I think it was. Ashley's been working with us for a while. He knows our utility system inside and out. He's been a very reliable and helpful resource when it comes to anything related to utility billing, utility rates. So very happy that Council supported actions to bring Ashley back for two studies we have. So the topic today is stormwater revenue study and options, alternatives. You may recall from the scope that was approved for Ashley to do the work. He will then, after we get through the stormwater revenue study, be following up with a full utility rate study. So for all three utilities, including general facilities charges, looking at everything and seeing if we're going to be able to meet our needs based on six-year, 20-year capital plans. So you'll be seeing Ashley probably quite a bit in the next eight months or so. So welcome. Happy to have you back again, Ashley. Ashley and staff, including Bree and Mike Simmons, Heather Stites, our utility billing tech, and Maureen Whitaker and I, we've all been working together closely in the past month or so, trying to get an understanding of what we have in front of us today in terms of our current utility billing for stormwater and the data we have for that versus how individuals, parcels, commercial entities are billed. And so to help put together the picture for Council, I did have a quick introductory memo with a map that Mike Simmons created, but also Ashley prepared a June 8th memo that was distributed just a couple of days ago. So hopefully you've had a chance to take a look at that. Ashley's memo provides good history on stormwater rates, stormwater expensive, and alternatives that we want to talk about today. So those alternatives are where we're going to end this discussion. Hopefully, we're going to be looking for direction from Council, just generally how to approach the discount that we currently provide to most commercial customers. And those three alternatives were listed in Ashley's memo. Before we jump into this, any questions from Council at this point?
Okay, oh, that's my raise hand thing. Yeah, question. The one unit for a commercial development, is that in the form of something that's in the statutes? I looked for it, I couldn't find it, to be quite honest, in Section 14. And/or does it reside in development agreements or variances? Where does it reside?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Heims, I missed the first few seconds of what you said. What specifically was it that you're looking for?
I'm looking for what authorizes this concept of one EBU for commercial developments? Was it a development agreement? Or is it something in the code? I couldn't find it in the code, by the way.
It's, Ashley references it in the code. It's, and I can bring it up on screen, it's Section 14.10.050C of the code. And I'll read it to everybody so that we can all be on the same page. It doesn't say specifically what you're talking about, but this is where it comes from. Well, I'll read Ashley's comment. I can read the actual code if you want, but it says it allows developed properties that are riparian to the harbor or properties with a city-approved detention facility to be charged a maximum of one EBU regardless of the size of their impervious, AKA hard surface area. But it's that section, subsection in the code that authorizes it. It doesn't say specifically "commercial", it just says those properties with an approved detention system.
Okay.
It brings up a, I'm not sure if I saw within the code where the definition of an EBU was 2,200 square feet.
Yeah, I don't remember where that is. That was adopted by Council at some point. I don't recall where it is, if it's in the code or in where that would be, but I'm pretty sure. Maybe, Bree, do you happen to know where that EBU definition is?
I'm looking for it right now.
Okay, so hopefully Bree can jump in and provide us with that. Okay, so what I was hoping to do was just a quick intro, but to jump in by, I was going to give a quick summary of the history. I mean, it's outlined really well in Ashley's memo, but I was going to give a quick summary on the history and then hand it over to Ashley to talk about current stormwater utility expenses and then the review of the three proposed alternatives. So, and Bree, if I take a breath, feel free to jump in if you see where that EBU is adopted. So again, stormwater utility rates were set and the utility was created in July of 1994. There was ordinance 448 and 449 are the two that created the stormwater utility. And we're going to follow up based on that section that I just read, 14.10.050C, which allows properties to have a discounted stormwater rate of just one EBU if they have approved detention facility. But there are also, and one of the topics we're going to focus on is there's also a disparity in some instances between customers that have developed under the city's code and within city limits compared to customers who are now in city limits but were originally developed under Pierce County and then annexed in after they were already developed. So there's a disparity there, and we'll look at some examples of that, too. But now, because pretty much every commercial development and that is created in the city would be receiving that discount, we're setting ourselves up for a self-fulfilling prophecy that we will have everybody except for residential units be receiving the discount, which on the surface, if you just look at that, there's, again, that's where a big inequity comes in and the thing that we're trying to address. But we, and I was going to bring up that map that Mike Simmons provided here real quick. I just want to take a look at that and see if there's any questions before we proceed. Okay, Councilmember Frannich.
Who is Mike Simmons?
Oh, he's our GIS guru. He does all of our GIS maps, all our GIS coordinator. Okay, so I just wanted to start off by showing you some examples of stormwater billing rates. You saw this, this was in your packet. But before Ashley jumps in and talks about current stormwater expenses and reviews the alternatives, I just wanted to see if there are any questions here. We pulled some examples. These are by no means all the examples, but these are just a variety of examples. You can see everything in Gig Harbor North that is commercial in nature. They have an EBU multiplier of one. So Albertson's parcel that pays one EBU, Target parcel, one EBU, Home Depot, one EBU, Costco, one EBU. Then you look right next door at the Ridge, and you've got one EBU per parcel. So what is essentially, when you look at the percent or hard surface area total, they're paying 122 EBUs for essentially the same number of acres as Target, and Target pays one. So there's a clear discrepancy on the equity issue. Then you go down to this area down on the south end, and you see Harbor Plaza. Again, Harbor Plaza, if you know your history of Gig Harbor, that was developed all under Pierce County and then annexed in later in the late 90s. They have a stormwater facility that was created essentially the same rules that the city had at the time, but it was created under Pierce County. They're not receiving that discount. So they're paying for 12 acres of hard surface area, 248 EBUs. Now, something that has been in the city for a long time, and an example of an existing facility, existing site that doesn't have any stormwater detention is the commercial parcels in and around the Peninsula Shopping Center. And so we just picked this one, 1.4 acres, EBU multiplier 28, but they don't have detention, they don't have treatment, they were in and created long before and grandfathered in before any stormwater requirements were in place. So any questions on this before I hand it over to Ashley? Councilmember Frannich.
Why is Harbor Plaza, since they have a stormwater facility, why are they paying 248?
Could be a couple of reasons. I'm not quite sure. It could be that they, when they annexed in, that they never went back to the city and requested it, or what they did request to have a reduction that we found that their detention system didn't meet our standards at the time. Might have met the standards when it was developed, but it wasn't, didn't meet the city's standards at the time it was annexed in.
So are you sure, are you, do you know a definitive answer, or are those just both possibilities?
I don't have a definitive answer. I'm almost certain it's one of those two possibilities. Councilmember Heims.
Yeah, I'm interested in the square foot of impervious surfaces seems to be the controlling metric here in this discussion. And yet I went back to the charges, the administrative charges and all the charges that go with it. And I was having a hard time going from the amount of stormwater you create and the charges. It just, it seems like it, well, we had to think up something to allocate it, and that's what we do. That may be a little harsh, but that's the way it looks to an outside engineer, let me put it that way.
You're right. We have to allocate it somehow. And so what we have determined is that the, it used to be that if you had an impervious surface, then you had stormwater runoff. However, new stormwater manuals, new stormwater regulations, all of that is created, we're changing our direction. It's not, because we have low-impact development, not everybody's going to have an impervious surface that has runoff. But what we do agree on, and what is consistent across the board, is that hard surfaces are necessary for vehicles to drive on. And those vehicles and the hard surfaces are the reason that we have stormwater issues. And so we want to turn back to the whole reason that we have our NPDS permit and then the reason that we have to manage stormwater within the city of Gig Harbor. And so we could look at it by trip generation, but that changes too drastically. And so we just said, well, generally, it's by, you have the same amount of, generally proportionate number of vehicles versus trip generation that are in your parking lot and hard surfaces that are created.
Okay, the other question I had is associated with that, and that is most retention or detention facilities I'm familiar with, they don't change the amount of runoff. They just slow it down, okay? Slow it down and release it later. So I'm sitting there and saying, well, if we really believe that runoff in total was what really counts, how did this facility, this detention facility thing even get in? Because I would think that would be a logical reason to take it out, okay? If we all believe that total runoff is what counts, not the rate at which it runs off, then, yeah, we've been living in sin for 20-some years, 30 years, whatever it is, from a rationale standpoint.
Well, there was a time in the, prior to this, prior to the era we're living in now, where it would have been stormwater runoff that counts. But right now, let's just say every future development that comes into the city infiltrates their stormwater runoff. We still have to have a stormwater program. We still have to have a stormwater utility, even if every drop of rain goes into the ground. And so it's not, I don't think it's appropriate to tie our stormwater rates to impervious area and flow stormwater runoff, because we still have to have a stormwater program regardless of how much water flows off of a site.
Okay.
It's, if I would add, excellent, two excellent questions. We further feel that, well, impervious surface area, hard surface area, it is a critical planning tool. That is, as you say, local retention, detention attenuates flows. But from an engineering standpoint, you know, their real metric is rainfall and how much surface area. And if you look at NIPD's, it basically says that anything that diverts flow is runoff, even if it's local, within somebody's property. And it eventually enters the watershed, enters the basins. And you may delay it over here, but you're funneling into an area, and then it's going somewhere else. And so it's kind of a split between your basic engineering tool of prediction and planning versus the real life. And then, as you correctly pointed out, when you look at operating costs, they have absolutely nothing to do with the amount of flow.
Okay, got it.
Which is, I mean, this is what we're attempting to correct.
Okay, I don't see any more hands at this point. That's a quick overview of the history of how we got to where we are. I was going to ask Ashley now to go through his memo and provide a quick summary of the stormwater utility expenses and then review the three alternatives.
All right. First, just, you know, we're tackling this first because this could be a significant, you know, we're probably talking on the order of a couple hundred thousand dollars. And that's 20% of your revenues from stormwater. So we need to tackle this before we can look at the long-term rate planning, which is phase two going into the utility rate study. So as I said, we are talking about a significant amount of money, and that's really what drove this. So as we talked about, there's a, I think there's been a fundamental disconnect between the idea of a stormwater system, impervious surface area, and as I said, the driver of those costs. We've looked, if you look at Table 2, when you start looking at where those expenses are, and we're at about a million dollars a year, I think it's 40, 50% of your costs are tied up with, in just street maintenance. This is sweeping, catch basin, vacuuming, strictly that. The rest is really maintaining, you know, the overhead associated with having people from the department working on anything. That's your admin general. And then your admin public works is really, this is planning, this is monitoring, these are regulatory costs more so than tied up with operations. And so what you really come down with is most of the costs that we're talking about on an annual operating basis have nothing to do with the quantity of flow. As Jeff mentioned, we can stop the flow completely, no more, you know, no additional flow. Every new commercial, every new property has their own detention, retention facilities, and it's still isn't going to change our operating cost one iota. And so we've looked at, we're looking for ways to to realign the structure rate so that there isn't this inequity between the residential customers and the commercial customers. I don't think anybody can argue that paying one, you know, $14 a month, if you're Target compared to a single-family residence, there's just, there's something wrong there. It's just patently, patently wrong. And as I said, it should, when you really look at the system, it becomes really clear, when you look at the actual system, you've just got a bunch of trunk lines going down streets that you're protecting from the bay, you know, the harbor. And those are where all your facilities are. And those facilities are tied with the streets. When it comes down to it, the stormwater system, in all actuality, you know, the bulk of it is your core system of roads. And as those branch out and the density goes down, you go from hard facilities of, you know, curbs. And essentially, soon as you put curbs around a street, you have now a channel. And you're just, that's stormwater. As I said, as soon as you go out to less dense areas, then those, the curbs are replaced with ditches. And that's what handles, and those have to be maintained. But that is essentially your stormwater system from an operational start standpoint. And then you tack on the regulatory costs that have been driven by regulations. And as Jeff mentioned, the whole reason, the nexus for bringing those out is the quality of the water. It's not the water itself. It's got nothing with the flow, it's the contaminants that go along with it. When that flow goes, hits the street and rolls into the catch bases, the waste from cars, that's, those are all lethal compounds. You know, we're not talking about dirt and soil. These are acetates, they're chemical. They're associated with cars. And the same from, you know, the other major source are roofs. Roofs and chemicals, lawns, anything like that. So it is hard surfaces that are the cause of the quality issues. So with that in mind, we looked at, well, what are our options here? And obviously, doing nothing, that's an option. It's not something we like. We could completely get rid of the discount. And I think there's certainly enough justification. You know, if you agree with what we're talking about, that the flow really isn't a matter, then a credit for detention, retention, when that's required of everybody really kind of loses, you know, where's the rationale there? If you still, as I said, there is no denying that flow impacts the system from a sizing standpoint of some facilities and from a planning standpoint. So it's not a stretch of the imagination that says that, okay, we want to promote, there's nothing wrong with providing a discount. But I think, I think going into a huge rationale or an engineering justification to set that kind of begs the vagaries of what we're talking about, which is there's not a lot of rationality tied between the units that we use to charge this and not. And so I think the, if you do believe that the discount is appropriate, I believe leaving it as just a generic 5%, 10% saying, okay, we will give you a discount for this, and then just walk away, not try and justify it further. It really defies justification. If you wanted us to come up with an actual number, we could certainly come up with some justification, but at some point, we just have to come up with a number. Ashley, this is Bob Larson. I'm going to ask Mayor to take a break from your information and go to the council. He's got four hands up waiting to be asked a question, so. Okay, yes, rather than, yes, go ahead.
Let's start, I believe, with Councilmember Rodenberg might have been first.
I think, Mayor, actually, it's Councilmember Frannich, then Heims, then Aberstall, and then Rodenberg is the list I've got.
Thank you. Go ahead, Councilmember Frannich.
Isn't it true, Mr. Emery, or Mr. Langhelm, that the stormwater detention ponds, isn't the theory of that to improve the quality of the runoff?
You will have some settling, especially of suspended solids, but you're not, without bio, without some sort of a catalyst in there, no, you're not going to, you're not going to completely, that water is not drinkable when it comes out of the.
Well, obvious, it's not drinkable, but the theory behind it is those detention ponds are supposed to help with the water quality of the discharge.
The code has required for many years, decades, that you do water quality treatment. And yes, some of it is wet ponds. The wet ponds are supposed to be the water quality treatment, or there's other ways to settle out the pollutants, contaminants. So yes, it's supposed to help.
But I might also add that before it gets to the pond, you know, there's a fair amount of, we have to have our trucks clean out those drains. And so there's even a lot of extra expenses before we even get to the ponds.
We are pumping the catch basins in the Target parking lot?
No, but we're cleaning out stormwater catch basins and pipes that are in public right away before it gets to stormwater facilities that are being maintained by another entity.
Well, obviously, we'd be doing that one way or another.
Yeah, but the whole intent of this discussion, I mean, the focus of the discussion should be on the fact that we have to have a stormwater utility that manages the stormwater regulations that are required of us by the state and federal government. That's the NIPD's, NPDS. And so even if every drop of water goes into the ground, and if that means the contaminants don't flow downstream anymore, we still have to manage our stormwater. So we still have to have revenue, and we have to figure out a way that's proportionately fair and equitable to manage, to complete the stormwater management.
Okay, Councilmember Heims.
Yeah, I was kind of heading, I think, to the same point that Councilmember Frannich was heading toward, and that is, if you look at the street maintenance, and by the way, does that include cleaning out the storm sewers with the VAC thing? The VACTOR, I think they call it?
Yes, that would include cleaning the storm pipes, catch basins, sweeping, yes, all of that.
Okay, so then it begs the question, do commercial entities that have got big parking lots, do they do the same thing? I assume they do.
They're required, they have different requirements based on their stormwater maintenance agreement that was in place at the time, but generally, yes, they have to do similar cleanings to their parking lots.
Ah-ha, so there really is some cost there that they have based on their square footage or whatever it is, propensity to have trees around or people litter or whatever you want to do. There is a cost there, and it looks like it's significant, at least for the city side, for the public streets, that 450,000, which is roughly half. And they would be incurring something similar to that for their facility.
Right, and I might add, you know, this isn't just like stormwater runoff from roofs. This is every single car entering the parking lot, all the things that that contains, too, that enters our thing. So the fees do need to be adjusted.
And Councilmember Heims, if you're saying, do they have, do private entities still have to do a similar type of street maintenance that we perform? Yes, they do. They just have it on a much, much smaller scale, because when you look at how much hard surface is in a Yes, they do. They just have it on a much, much smaller scale because when you look at how much hard surface is in a Costco parking lot. Versus is in all city streets, we have a lot more, significantly more square footage.
Okay, to, to, to Emory Ashley's point, I think the. The, the discount thing, don't eliminate it. Bring it down by some amount. What I'm heading for is the rationale, it seemed to me, is you treat them like a house. Okay, a residence, okay, for openers. And then you subtract out those things that you know they have to do that are unique. To their situation, like a big parking lot. That a. Resident doesn't have. For example. The, uh. The leaves fall over our, all over our neighborhood and they clog the storm sewers royally and sure enough. The, uh, the vector truck is there, okay? In fact, it's an HOA vector truck. Um, but it cleans it out. To me, it would seem we could put together a rationale around that concept called. Start with them the same as a resident and then take out. A couple of the elements that may be unique to their situation, okay, that they do have to do. And I'm assuming, by the way, the fact that they do. Uh, clean out their, uh, their sewers, the fact that they do vacuum their parking lots. I've seen them do it quite a bit, particularly in Gig Harbor North. Um, they do incur expenses and. The stuff they're dumping into the sewers, I got a feeling into the trunk lines. I feel might be a little cleaner. Than what we get off the streets.
I would. Point out that. Would you give a single family residence a break for? The cost for them to clean their, their gutters on their. Their roof? A little analogous to. To, I mean, you, you basically, you're, you're responsible for your own property.
Yeah.
We, we, as I said, remember, we're. We're talking about allocating the cost to maintain a core. System on your roads.
Yeah.
They, you know, we, we're not addressing, and the fact is, you have a lot of single family residences that. Are complete detention facilities themselves.
Yeah.
Just by dint of location. We're. We're saying that, listen, the whole, the whole, the whole system is revolving around roads. That's the quality issue. That's the. The operational costs are there. How do we allocate that fairly between? Between everybody. And when we, when we start. Going to, okay, well, you're doing something on your own property. Just by dint of, these are the regulations now. Um, we're kind of, we're kind of. Shifting the focus. We're saying that, oh, this is all the entire system and you shouldn't have to pay a share of that. Well, it's your property. It's not ours.
Yeah, I, I, I completely support what Ashley's saying because it, it. The city has to be getting its residents, its property owners to pay for the infrastructure that the city has to maintain. And everybody who owns property has to maintain their own in the own manner that is identified in the storm code. And so that's, that's a given. Everybody maintains their own. And then how do we collect money to help support and maintain what we have to do as a city?
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I realize I'm being the devil's advocate here. But given that, that this focuses. Uh, not only on some, some big boys, but they're all big boys in the same area. Every one of the. Examples you've got here are. Gig Harbor North, Borgan, Bor, Borgan Boulevard residents, so to speak. Um, I, I think, I think we need some. semblance of rationale when we. When we make this kind of a change. Um, that we can at least, uh, uh, with a straight face say, well, here's. Here, here's the logic that goes with this. So I'll stop right there.
Councilmember Abersall.
Thank you. Um, I have two questions. I think the first one's prime, pretty much is a clarification question, so I can get this right in my head, but. My, my understanding is, is we have taken revenue. Uh, the revenue we're taking in right now. Takes off about a little over a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, off the city's bill and it's roughly going to cost us a million dollars. And to, to continue to pay for this. So is that correct? Is my understanding of that correct so far?
I believe, yes, your, the expenses are about a million dollars a year and we think there's probably about a hundred. Hundred fifty, two hundred thousand dollars at stake here with this discount.
Okay, so yeah, if we give away the discount, then we're, we're taking on that additional, uh, funds. I guess the second question is, um, that would we be legally allowed to, is there A, a contractor out there or a. A subsidiary business that could handle this, that we could legally employ? And that would cover us, uh, our federal or state requirements for this management?
Uh, y- yes, we could pay a third party to manage it for us, but I can guarantee you it would be more expensive than doing it anyhow.
Okay.
And before we go on the next question, I just want to follow up. Uh, Councilmember Franch, I believe, asked about where EBU is established and actually Heather Stites, our utility billing tech, provided it. It's in, it's a definition in ordinance four, four, nine, and it is, it is defined equivalent billing unit shall mean twenty-two hundred square feet of, of impervious ground cover. So it's in the code. Or it's in, in the ordinance, sorry.
Okay, Councilmember Rodenberg.
I have a, a couple of comments and then a, uh, proposal. Uh. First of all, I, I think the residents. Uh, just like the commercial buildings, they do pay for that vacuuming through their taxes. So they're paying just like the. Uh, but it's more indirect than the commercial. Uh, buildings are. And secondly, uh, uh, the ponds that. The retention ponds that hold, uh, contaminated water. I think that they probably. Uh, even though there is some settling, uh, like Mr. Emery said. The toxic elements of that water. Uh, are still there. So you get a certain amount of evaporation off the surface area. Which means that the water that's left is actually getting more concentrated. With contaminants because they don't evaporate, just the H two O does. And my other suggestion is. That possibly there's a fourth option that we might select. And that is if we eliminate. Uh, the discounts altogether. Even though these are big companies, they could probably handle the hit. They're not going to like it. So maybe we could have a declining. Uh, elimination, maybe twenty percent a year for the next five years, and that would make it more. Uh, tasteful to them. Uh, instead of, you know, they're getting the hair on their neck all up. That's my comment.
So, um. Je- Jeff or someone, uh, can you, Ashley, those, those were good statements. Can you make notes of some of those? Okay.
Yeah.
Councilmember Luke.
Yes, uh, I just want to remind everybody that these big businesses have cars. Coming and going and coming and going and sitting all day long. When a house does not usually have that amount of, uh. Activity from their, from vehicles that are. Causing this problem, so, so it's a huge. A huge difference, uh, if we're going to try to equate houses to big businesses, it's a, it's a huge difference, I think.
Thank you. Councilmember, um. Franch.
Yeah, thank you. I, uh, unfortunately have to leave the meeting here shortly, but, uh, my, my last comment will be. The, these businesses that, uh, we're, we're talking about here. They provide a tremendous amount of revenue to the city through their sales tax collections. And, um, I. Wish I could stay till the end of this meeting, um. But, uh, you know, I, I, I think some, some credit needs to be given to the revenue that they collect. And also the fact that, um. You know. I don't know. I'll leave it at that for now. Thank you all.
Well, and ma- maybe I'll just, uh, throw this out there for consideration. Um. Most jurisdictions don't have this, uh, in fact, actually with jurisdictions you have, I don't know if you had know of any jurisdictions that provide this discount. Uh, we're one of the few, if any, of the jurisdictions that provide a discount like this.
I have never seen another. A discount as substantial as this.
Yeah. Wow, that's, that's good to know. And however we need to move forward, we need to, uh, let them know that, um, at kind of the first paragraph. So Councilmember Abersall.
Yeah, so I want, uh, to know if what Councilmember Roddenberg suggested about the staggering the price, can we, is that an option that we can do?
Not a problem. I'm sorry. I, I see, I see that as no different than. Than eliminating the discount. We can, we can make that occur. Over at any pace you want. And. It would make sense to me. You do a six-year, you, you set rates for a six-year period. You could just. Make the timeline the same. Fifteen percent a year or something, just to. You can just, you can make that however you'd like. It's not a problem from a, an analytical or a practical standpoint.
Now, one council member mentioned how, you know, um, you're doing this across the board, so it's fair to everyone. If we're doing this, we're not just talking about Gig Harbor North. We're talking about Uptown.
But. Yes, we're, we're absolutely talking about everybody across the board. Um, the reason we gave these examples for Gig Harbor North because that has had the most large commercial development that was not annexed. The, we did not give an example, though we could come back with an example later of Uptown. Uptown is the only. Large commercial development in the south end that has been developed since it's been located within city limits. So maybe it would be better to have included that and I apologize, we didn't do that, but, um. Definitely Uptown, everybody in the entire city, we would apply to everybody in the entire city.
Okay, so that's great for everyone to understand that this is across the board equally.
Uh, Jeff, I, I hate to do this to you, spring this on you, but. Um. I was thinking over the past couple of days in preparation for this. And. I believe your multifamilies are done based on. Um, hard surface area.
Uh, yes, I believe.
Yes, I believe hard surface area.
Yes.
And one of the things we hadn't considered is. Is that. Is that. Using hard surface area for. Multifamily residential. More. More consistent. Than treating them as residences. And using their number of units as opposed to. Their square footage. Uh, in water and sewer. Water and sewer, there's a, there's a clear line. Hotels and motels are treated as commercials. Apartments and condos are treated as, as single family residences from a. From a base charge standpoint, which stormwaters are base charges. So, uh, if, if somebody were to ask, ask me. My, I mean, I, I think it's a little bit more. Consistent logically. That's. You know, an apartment house with, with twenty units. Those are twenty small residences. You might, you might use a, in, in water and sewer, sometimes they use like a seventy-five percent. Factor to accommodate. Um, lower, lower usage by dint of density. Um, because of apartment units usually have a, a smaller density, uh. Smaller density and therefore don't use as much water as sewer. Um, but I, I did a quick look at the numbers and. Um, if it was based on units, even at a reduction like seventy-five percent, we'd be looking at three or four hundred more. Billable units per month. Um, and then, um, also. If our logic is that the. That it's not the flow, it's the, it's the core street system that, that is the driver here. Then. The code also allows those riparian. Customers. Um, the one EBU. And so that, those would need to be, I think consistently would need to be added to the list of commercials that. That goes away. Does, doesn't matter if you're on the, on the water.
Right, I agree that regardless of your location, you still have the same impact generated to our stormwater infrastructure.
Yeah. Okay, let's proceed with either Ashley or Jeff where your. If you have that spot between before the questions.
Well, um. At, at this point. Um, I think we've heard a couple of options. Well, Councilmember Himes, go ahead if you have a quick question.
Yeah, the, the other question I had was, what, where do we stand? Relative to the reserves that are required. In. This storm sewer funding, okay, and I assume it's separate funding. Uh, let's say over the next six-year period. If, if we don't do something like this, that is, for example, would we have to raise rates? Throughout the city on everybody. To, uh, to stay afloat.
That, that is. Of course, what the next study is intended to, but. You did do a stormwater, um, comprehensive plan, uh, last year. And we had a financial analysis in there. And you have several capital. Costs, which actually segues into your next discussion about the public, public works loans. Um, yes, the analysis assumed that you were going to have to issue several million dollars in, in loans. Because you did not have the cash. Or the revenue available to, to meet your capital obligations in the stormwater fund. So there will be. A, a rate increase tied with that.
Okay, so that's the first. Logical defendable thing I've heard here. That is where you can say, hey. Here's, here, here's what we're heading for. We've got pretty good numbers on this. And if we don't do something, we're going to have to raise rates on everybody. That I think is defendable. Now, then you get into the distribution. Of how you do that.
And, and, and I'm not, this is, this is a working group. This is, this is us talking about it.
Yeah.
Um, I'm, I'm more, I'm more impressed with the. The fact that we've had years of unfairness. The, the residents have been picking up the tab.
I agree. Yeah, but by the way, I personally, I agree with you, but I, I also agree that. Some people will say, well, this thing's been grandfathered essentially, and if we bring in the other. Uh, shopping, big shopping. Commercial centers. Um, they could be formidable if they, if they don't agree with us, um, in many ways.
They're, they're, from a practical standpoint, you. Boy, your, your authority on rates is, is basically unchecked. Um, as long as you are not. Um. As long as you're not distinguishing between customers, putting your. Your finger on, on one customer class or another. You've got complete authority to do this and as we pointed out, this is. This is very unusual from a stormwater standpoint, any discount and having a, basically for a large commercial, a hundred percent discount. Or ninety-nine percent discount, that's.
Okay.
That's, that's completely unheard of.
Are any of these covered by a development agreement? That was the other question I had. Well, they could be running down the sideline under authorization of a development agreement.
Not right.
That's the sort of the code.
Monthly rates are not covered by development agreements.
Okay.
And I, I also might add, you know, like, like he, like Ashley mentioned, and we, we've mentioned, um. Yeah, our individual homeowners are going to be picking up the tab for this. So, you know, if it's been brought to our attention. Um, to do something about this. And we choose not to do something and we end up, I wish Councilmember Franch was here, we end up. Raising our, our sewer bills for our homeowners. To compensate for other, uh, large developers. I don't think that sits well with our community. Councilmember Rodenberg.
And now that I know that, uh, we're the only. Uh, district that we all know of that has this discount. Uh, I don't think that the commercial. Businesses would be upset at all. They'd probably be grateful they got along, got away with it for so long. And I, it's just a cost of them doing business. And they have to pay that cost in every other district. So I don't think it's, uh, even a concern that they might get upset.
And I have to say, um, that when a property is developed, it's developed strictly, and, and the general facilities charge for stormwater is, is paid for directly based on. The amount of impervious area, the hard surface area. And for some reason, when you go from general facilities charge at development to monthly billing, all of a sudden the discount appears and that's, that's another inconsistency.
Yeah, Councilmember Abersall.
Yeah, so maybe, uh, Jeff can answer this. But was the philosophy behind this discount to, uh, these corporations just to be more attractive for them to come and. Into Gig Harbor and set up shop or where was, where was that decision and why was that decision allowed?
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll go back and, and make some assumptions. So again, this was nineteen eighty-four. I was probably thirteen years old, but, uh.
So. No excuse.
I know. So, uh, no, what, what I assume was that when stormwater regulations first started to come into play. We didn't. We didn't have National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. We didn't have any of that. It was just, the city looked at itself, or cities like ours, looked at ourselves and said, hey, we're starting to get, pick up more expenses from managing stormwater runoff from these large area, large commercial areas. Um, we want to incentivize you to go ahead and put in a stormwater detention system. So I'll tell you what, if you, if you from large commercial area, put in a stormwater detention system, then we, the city, don't have to manage, do as much stormwater management from your runoff. So you put this in, it'll help us, we'll give you a discount. It's an incentive, is my guess.
Thank you.
So, uh, direction, tell us, tell us what you feel is best, both Ashley and Jeff, for, and give us direction.
Well, I, I think one of two, uh, options is, is good, uh. One of them is outlined in Ashley's memo. It's essentially alternative to, which is strictly eliminate the dis, the discount. Um, starting as soon as the, as soon as the ordinance takes effect. Um, but I am supportive of, and then maybe Councilmember Rodenberg has changed his opinion on this, but Council Rodenberg's proposal to slowly implement that from a full discount to no discount over a course of, as Ashley said, maybe it's a six year rate period. That's my recommendation, one of those two options. Councilman Denson.
As I'm in favor of eliminating the discount, I, I don't mind making it a bit gradual because these businesses have to plan and if they've planned for this cost, then that, we don't want to shock them. Um, I think six years is too long. I think a year or two is, is plenty of time.
Okay, Councilmember Arkley.
Yes, I would echo what Councilmember Denson just said. I, I agree that they should have some kind of warning and, and planning time, but that it doesn't need to be six years. I, I think what she said a year or two would be appropriate.
Okay. Councilmember Woo.
Yeah, and I agree with that. I think, so if six is too long and I, I would say two or three more in the three department, maybe give them time.
Okay, my gut tells me as Jeff said, I've been doing this a while for you guys and your stormwater is pretty stable. I have a feeling with this correction over a two or three year period. What you're gonna see is, is a, almost a will probably, it'll probably abate any program rate increase um, over the window, which if, if that affects your, your idea of, of how long you want that to implement or not, I just, I wanted to point out that I have a feeling that this is going to provide probably close to the funding that's going to require for that, that capital program.
Councilmember, so maybe after two years, which is at the beginning of the third, uh, Councilmember Hines.
I, I like the idea of tying it to avoidance of a rate increase. Both in terms of the magnitude and the period over which we, we stagger this thing, okay? It, like I said, it's the one piece here that I think we can hang our hat on with a straight face and say, hey, here's what we're trying to do. We're trying to get some equality in this thing and avoid a rate increase period. And I think that's, that's saleable in my mind, okay? Um, so I would strongly endorse that concept as we go forward, call whatever it takes to avoid a rate increase in the six year period. That should be our, our goal. And I can see different ways to do that in terms of, uh, you start out big in the first year, or you start out small and progressively get bigger, or do you keep it constant throughout the whole thing in terms of um, the reduction of the discount? So.
Bob, you will, I believe of you, you're familiar to me. For the other set of council members, when we get to the point of looking at planning new utility rates. We actually have that ability to adjust and tailor the, the rate increase and, and I will build that into the stormwater so that we can see the discount and play with it every year. You can just decide that I like this. The timing of the capital may impact, you know, this may be one of those things where if we do it quicker, you may not have to take out one of the loans. So i- it will pay us, it will serve us right to take that approach and, and look at it specifically and, and make a decision then. We, we certainly don't now have to, have to decide that, but we will give you the, the tools necessary to really hone that in and make it the best decision possible. I'm wondering, Jeff, if, if it's appropriate to talk about, you know, any kind of, of communication, direct communication with the, the businesses. Some sort of a, a notification that this is, this is where your rate would change. There's a personalized approach, an individual approach as opposed to.
But, uh, yes, I, as part of our stormwater revenue study, we were going to, we're prepared to at least reach out to folks and let them know. Uh, probably hope, hold one open house and just let them know the direction we're going, but we wanted to have this meeting today to get some direction so we could put together what that would look like. And I think we're getting that today. It sounds like we're hearing a general consensus about that and we can take the next steps to put together um, what that'll look like and then, uh, reach out to the public and, uh, see if they want to provide input as we proceed.
Right, the, the certainly the, we can't make any move until we have a master list of of these, this is every commercial entity that's going to be affected and to this degree. And, and as we saw with the, with the G I S data, we actually have to do that work, the, the staff have to do that work. With that information is not readily at hand right now.
No, but it's not, but I, and I do want to touch before we leave this topic on this agenda, I do want to show you what uh, our G I S data looks like, just so you can see what Michael, uh, Mike Simmons has done, but, uh, Councilman Rodenberg.
Yeah, I'm, I'm now in favor of a shorter timeframe for declining discount, especially, uh, like Mr. Emery said, if it could prevent us from taking out a loan. And a, a side note, you know, if you, I think it's like six companies equaled about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. You know, a twenty-two thousand dollar annual fee to a big box store is, is nothing. It's nothing. It's the cost of doing business. I mean, they would, I, I'm thinking they'd pay that without flinching, especially since they have to do it in every other district.
Thank you, thank you. Councilmember Aberstall.
Yeah, so, uh, that just kind of threw me off, Councilmember Rodenberg, but, um, so I'm just go back to you because I agree with that also, that sentiment. Uh, but I also want to acknowledge that we do have a lot of businesses that come into this town and then leave suddenly too. And so that's the reality that we do have to focus on. But I guess my, uh, oh, I remember my first question was if we do the, if, when do, if we start to implement this, uh, eliminated and discounted? Does it take place this year, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two? When does this kick in?
Uh, we are anticipating that we can hopefully have council adoption of utility rates by this fall and they would be effective January one, twenty twenty-two. We, it just, uh, to re- remind council that we went uh, the entire year, we were, our last utility rate increase was January one of twenty twenty. Uh, we skipped January one of twenty twenty-two, or sorry, twenty twenty-one. And so the residents went with one year without a rate increase, which we thought was appropriate because of, uh, the pandemic. But, uh, we, we do try and assess these rates, uh, on an annual basis, just to keep up with costs and adjust as necessary.
One last question, and I apologize for jumping in here. But if we do eliminate the discount, we do it in a staggered way, can we? Does every elimination have to be equal? Uh, and I guess my question is, the first year, can we make it a ten percent reduction and the next year forty percent and then the next year, you know, sixty percent?
Like I said, complete flexibility, you will, you will be able to make that call as you're looking at the model. Try ten percent, try fifteen percent. Uh, that's what staff and we'll be working through. Hey, if we can push this up to thirty-five in the first year, does that change?
Right.
Does that really help us out two years later?
My concern is that there's a lot of businesses that are still struggling. Um, and they're uncertain about their economic future. Uh, even though the, the outlook looks better than it did six months ago, it's still kind of cloudy. And, um, you know, these kind of changes in, in, um, their costs, like Councilmember Denson said, uh, could be you know, it's could shock them. So I, I, I want to be careful of that, even though there are, there are big chain stores. But if we're doing this across the board, it's going to affect everyone.
Right.
Pop shops, correct?
Well, it's, it's not going to affect places like Harbor Plaza. They're already paying the fee regardless.
Right. I do want to point out that, you know, a lot of your small businesses, there's, there's not, it's going to be very minimal when you have one or two or three parking spaces. So a lot of this is really the, the bigger stores, the big box stores. And I have to point out that we, one reason why we have weathered this storm so well is big box stores have actually done incredibly well. Um, I mean, I have Costco insurance and I've watched Costco. They've done better in many ways than before all this. So um, they're the ones that are going to feel it, but they also knew going in that this was standard for most cities. So now question, the, the sewer and, and rate study that we're doing. Because we're doing it so soon, is it gonna, i- if we put in some figures, is it going to calculate that into that study?
That's, that's why we've, we're tackling stormwater first.
Okay, and I think you've heard pretty much across the board from council for the most part. I would focus on what would not make us have to raise rates. You know, we've, we've heard that and, and Dave's here now too and has been, but, um, you know, if it's two years or three years or ten percent, I think we all have felt that we, we want to focus on what it takes to do this, to not have rates go up.
That's, uh, that's pretty much, other than getting our house in order so that we know the actual, uh, how much every business and then can calculate every dollar. As soon as we have that, then we can launch right into the rates and we will wrap this in.
Perfect.
And make that done. Um, I think though, in, in some of the earlier discussion, I think it might be very wise to, for me to to do a pretty pretty good area search and be able to report to you actual, listen, here are, here are fifteen of the major cities in the western slope and not one of them has a discount. Or this is, this is the maximum discount or this, or some actual numbers there, so, so we uh, just to give you some, hopefully to, to diffuse some of the, some of the hue and cry.
That's great. You'll give us, you know, give council and myself support when we go, uh, to talk to people or if they talk to us. Councilmember Rodenberg.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we really don't need, we're not going to vote on this. We just need a show of hands for consensus to give direction to Mr. Emery and Director Langham.
Correct.
Yeah, I think we're probably there, huh?
Yeah, I think we are.
I think so. I just want to take thirty seconds. I want to brag about Mike Simmons' maps. I just want to show real quick what, what he's been doing for us uh, at a very economic and, uh, quick pace. So this is a map of Point Fosse Corridor. Uh, he has put together hard surface maps. So purple is paved, yellow is sidewalks. This magenta to, tope, I guess, is service or is a rooftop. So you can see real quick. And all of this data has square footage associated with it. So you can see, you can take a parcel and you can identify how much impervious surface is on there, or hard surfaces on there. Um, and this has really been helpful with all of our data that we've gathered. So, uh, black also is roadways. So. Anyway, um, all this data that Mike's been working on in the background has been very helpful to us and will continue to be very helpful to us.
Great, thank you, Jeff. Now Jeff, you had the loan opportunity, trust fund as well?
Uh, yes, I have the Public Works Trust Fund. I don't know, I know, uh, in, in the background, Ashley might hear about this, but I don't know, Ashley, if you want to stick around or, or um, we'll say adieu to you.
If it's, if it's anything other than singing their praise and, and how good this is, how important it is to go after these. But no, if there's anything specific to the stormwater, God be happy to sit there and listen.
Well, actually for stormwater, we're not, I was, I was just going to go through, um, a quick summary of what the Public Works Trust Fund loans are all about. Most, most of these councilmembers have probably not, uh, been involved with the city when we've taken out a Public Works Trust Fund loan. Um, and so, uh, I know, um, City Administrator Bob Larson has a lot of experience with these too. Um, but I just wanted to provide a, a overview of the program. Um, and then some examples of, of a couple of projects that we staff are recommending we go after some Public Works Trust Fund loan monies for. Uh, because the deadlines are coming up really quick. So I was just, that's, that's my quick summary, so.
Guys, it is the cheapest money out there and it is the cheapest to access. The, the program requirements are minimal. It is, it is the absolutely preferred mechanism for, for funding capital.
Yeah. Thanks, Ashley.
Yes, thank, thank you for your expertise and, uh, and, uh, thank you to your cat. He tried to raise his paw, but he didn't get into the discussion. Thank you.
Okay, bye-bye.
Great. Uh, any closing co- comments, uh, Jeff, um, or Dave with our, with our loans?
Yeah, I, I wanted to go through those real quick and make sure, because I, I'm going to have a resolution before council on, uh, Ju- June twenty-eighth, and I wanted to at least get questions answered now, if council had questions before I develop that resolution. Okay, so real quick, and I definitely, uh, City Administrator Bob Larson, jump in if you think that you hear more than I should be talking about, but as noted in the memo that I provided, uh, the city has previously received funding uh, through Washington State's Public Works Board for, uh, multiple city capital projects with very low interest loans. We're talking half to one percent loans with very uh, low origination fees. This Public Works Board, uh, provides loans through their Public Works Trust Fund Loan Program. Um, we haven't seen those loans available for probably a decade or more. Because the state during the recession redirected those funds that used to go to Public Works Trust Fund Loans to other parts of the state budget. So that's why we haven't seen them for a very long time. I think the last time we got, the city obtained a Public Works Trust Fund Loan, and maybe Dave can remember if I'm wrong, but was for phase one of the wastewater treatment plant back in two thousand nine. And it was low, and I think it was half percent or less. So right now, the state has, uh, decided that they have enough funding available to reengage with Public Works Trust Fund Loan Program. So staff found out about this, uh, we went to a webinar and, uh, are now recommending that we go ahead and try and proceed with obtaining um, loans for at least one, if not more, city, upcoming city capital projects. Uh, the reason we're here today is we've got a deadline of, uh, applying for these loan, uh, applications by July ninth. That means the only count, and we need council approval to, uh, go ahead and, and apply for those loans. So the only council meeting between now and July ninth, of course, is June twenty-eight. So, um, wanted to give you a heads up about this, uh, have a conversation about it and then see if there's any interest in applying for these. So I have a couple of projects that I wanted to lay out for you and I'll, I'll take questions before I lay these out, but I have two sewer projects and two water projects that I wanted to lay out for you, and I've got some uh, just basic descriptions and some maps if you want to look at them and, uh, some dollar amounts. So, uh, I'll, I'll see as I hand up, Councilman Hines. I'm, I'm sorry, you're muted, Councilman Hines. I'm, okay, hand is down. Um, so you'll notice that these projects on the list out, so, some of them are already in our twenty twenty-one budget. We're already working on them. Um, some of them are already just in our six-year capital program, so they might sound familiar. And so, and you'll also hear about these because on January or June seventeenth, we're going to be talking about the uh, American Rescue Plan Act and these projects, a couple of these projects also carry over into that too, so we can decide, depending on how successful we are with one or the other, we can decide how we want to proceed as we proceed, go into the future. Uh, the first one is the Canterwood Boulevard Emergency Water Main Inter tie. It's about four hundred thousand dollars. It's in the twenty twenty-one budget. It's supposed to, uh, interconnect Gig Harbor North and specifically, uh, the St. Anthony's Hospital with the water system to the north. It's a Washington Water System operation so that we can have, uh, a backup, uh, source of water on the Gig Harbor North area, which we currently don't have. Um, so that's one, um, Councilmember Aberstall. I'm sorry, you're muted.
I'll let you finish, Jeff.
Okay. Uh, second project is the Gig Harbor North well development. This is Uh, second project is the Gig Harbor North Well Development, this is also known as Well Number Nine, right next to our Gig Harbor North Tank. Uh, it's right up against city limits where um. Olympus Drive ends and Canter- Canterwood subdivision begins, the tank up there, we're looking at putting in a well up there. Uh, this has been in our six-year plan for a while in the, in the water system. Um, we're looking at about two million dollars to develop the well, we wouldn't have necessarily water rights, but we could at least spend the money to develop the well, meaning drill the casing. Put in the screens and get it ready to go. We would need the water rights later, and we will need, according to our water system plan, that well installed by, I think it's two thousand twenty-six. So we're getting close. And it does take a while to get water rights and the well developed, so now is the time to do that work anyway. Other project was a North Harborview Drive Gravity Sewer Replacement, this is from Bernhardson Street to Goodman Avenue, so it's. Almost the entire section of North Harborview from Peacock to Vernhardson, almost. What we have in there is we have a belly, a low spot in our sewer, this is the exact same issue that we've been talking about with the Harborview Stinson. Intersection and a belly in the sewer there, only that project, the belly is. Uh, only a few hundred feet long, and uh, this other one, North Har- North Harborview, that's uh, almost a thou- or a little over a thousand feet, I think. I think it's seventeen hundred feet long. Uh, but it's a, it's a liability for us because we need to constantly be cleaning that section of sewer line, if we don't routinely clean it, there could be a plug, and then that would be. Disastrous for us to have a gravity sewer that's plugged. So um, it's been on our radar for a while and we're, we're really getting. Uh, to a point where we need to get that fixed instead of just trying to Band-Aid it by doing. Uh, annual or biannual jetting and cleaning of the line. Um, the last project is the Lift Station Five Replacement, and uh, Lift Station Five is in a tucked away area on the waterfront, and I'm going to share my screen with you here. Let me get it set up, so you're looking at it. But Lift Station Five is along Harborview Drive, just near the old Ferry Landing. So. I have here our GIS layers showing sewer, green is gravity, purple is force main. Um, and I'm going to zoom in, so just, I want to start though, you can all see where you are, here's the Harborview Ferry Landing, here's the sand spit, I'm going to zoom in. To a property here. And uh, you'll see. Right here. There's a little odd-looking box, which is in a parcel line. That is City of Gig Harbor Property. We have a sewer lift station, if you ever go out in your boat and you look up on the beach here, you'll see a green lid. That's Sewer Lift Station Number Five. It is, as you can tell, in amongst these houses, it's underhouses, everything, it's a mess to try and get to. The neighbors don't like it there, but this lift station is starting to fail. And of course, if it fails, it's, it doesn't have very many houses going to it, I think Daryl said it has about fifteen or twenty houses. But if it fails, it's going to be disastrous, it goes directly down onto the beach. Um, so Daryl is looking and Trent are looking at options on how to either repair and replace this. Or do another way of getting sewer from these houses up to the gravity sewer that's in Harborview Drive. So those are the four projects. They 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 range, I didn't give you the prices, but they range anywhere from. Uh, about four hundred thousand dollars for the Canterwood Water Main to about two million dollars to the Gig Harbor North Well Development, well number nine. And the other ones fall in between there, but they're, they're all, the other ones are right under the two million dollar mark, so. We would, we could uh, apply for one or all of those. Uh, one caveat in these is that the Canterwood Boulevard Emergency Water Entertie Project. We are, uh, we're getting ready to uh, get that thing out to bid, hopefully by the end of this year or first part of next year. So uh, we would hear back from the notes that Trent Ward gave me when he went and listened to the webinar. We would hear back from the Public Works Trust Fund Loan Program and the Board. On whether or not we were successful possibly as early as August of this year. So it would fall into uh, our utility rate study and the project really well if we were to have the Canterwood Boulevard uh. Emergency Water Entertie Project funded by um, water. Or sorry, by uh, Public Works Trust Fund Loans. You'll notice that we're only focusing on the water and sewer utility right now. Um, it's because those are projects that we have that are ready to go. Uh, one thing that the Board wanted to do is try and have shovel-ready projects. Those are projects that we either have in the budget or are going to be proposing as part of the twenty twenty-two budget, so. We would be able to expend the funds fairly quickly in the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two biennium state has. Uh, and so that's how we narrowed it down, you can do road and bridges, um, we don't typically with our. Uh, transportation benefit district and impact fees and everything else. Um, we we wanted to probably steer clear of those uh, trust fund loans right now, we, I don't know if we'd have a solid case for them. Uh, when we made an application, but uh, and the stormwater utility, uh, it's it's a great option, but I can see that as if we can use store. Public Works Trust Fund Loans in the future for the stormwater utility to definitely do that, because we do have some very large stormwater projects coming up. Namely, the uh. Uh, Donkey Creek Culvert Replacement underneath Harborview Drive and the uh, Bernhardson Street Culvert. Or Crescent Creek Culvert Replacement under Bernhardson Street, so those are going to be some very large expensive projects that maybe we could apply, tap into some Public Works Trust Fund Loans for. Partially or wholly, but uh, we're not ready for those, and those are not coming in the next year or two. So with that, I'll jump into questions, Councilmember Abersole.
Yeah, Jeff, thank you, uh, this is going to be a multi-question, uh, so for these, uh, assuming that we say, yeah, go out for these loans, that sounds a great idea. Um, and we get the loans for those four projects that you talked about. Do we A have the time to do the jobs? Uh, do we have the staff? And uh, is there any kind of schedule of payment uh, for uh, on the loans that we have to pay back? Um, that is, i- i- is a short amount of time, what's, what's the time that the payback has to ha- take place? And will we get these uh, things completed before that happens?
Okay, well, I'll answer the first. Two questions and I'll, maybe Dave can jump in with the timing of payments, uh, they are twenty-year loans, I'll say that.
Okay.
And do we have the time to do this? Most of these, yes, uh, the, again, the Canterwood Boulevard Emergency Water Main Entertie, we're already in design on that, I think Trent said we're fifty, sixty percent of the way through design, so. We're moving forward on that one regardless, the well number nine, we need to start that next year, that's going to be in the twenty twenty-two budget. To start that design and hopefully well development process next year. So um. So w- that is already in our schedule, the North Harborview Gravity Sewer Replacement. Um, that is something that we would like to do, I don't know if we're going to have the time to do it, but that's something, if it's a priority, we can make it a priority and and get that done. And the Lift Station Five, uh, that's like many of the other lift stations, it becomes a priority because we need to stop it from potential failure. Um, and the same thing with staff, I mean, as long as we can be staffed up, you're going to see as part of the twenty twenty-two budget, some revisions and and some requests for staff. Uh, that will hopefully help with this capital project uh, program. So I hope to say that, yes, if we can get staff on-boarded and uh, doing design work, that we will be able to complete that work. As for repayment, maybe I can ask Dave to jump in on that.
Well, it's a, it's a twenty-year loan, that's, that answers my question.
Oh, okay.
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 Thank you.
Um, Councilmember Rook.
Yes, thank you, so I have two questions for you, are these, um, is this funding, will it fully fund the projects or? Do we need matching funds for that?
Uh, usually we would have matching funds, though I believe this year, I think, I'm, let me dribble, double check, I think Trent said that uh, yeah, Public Works Trust Fund will fund one hundred percent of a project. Up to the maximum awarded amount. No matching funds, which is different than before.
Right, great, my second question has to do with our previous discussion. And uh, that perhaps. Some of the additional funds coming in from regarding the stormwater could perhaps um. Alleviate one of these loans. Do you see, is that a reasonable look, is that a reasonable thing to consider, or is it not?
I don't think it's likely going to be able to alleviate one of the loans, and here's why, because the stormwater revenues, even if we eliminate the discount that we discussed earlier. That's going to bring us in, I thought Ashley's rough numbers were about a million dollars a year would be our revenues. These projects that we're talking about for the the daylighting of Donkey Creek and Crescent Creek are in the five to seven million dollars each. So we just don't have the cash sitting in hand to do those.
Okay, thank you.
But but I, that said, the Donkey Creek Project, uh, when we daylighted that. Um, we went out and we're aggressive in trying to get federal dollars. And we were successful, and we got quite a bit of money, and I think two or three different pots of money, federal monies. For Donkey Creek Daylighting, so that's, that's, I think the loans would be a part of the revenue package, but not all of it. It would be stormwater revenues, grants, and uh, hopefully Public Works Trust Fund Loans.
Great, thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Heinz.
Uh, yeah, uh, these projects are all in what I call enterprise funding, okay, normally. And my question revolves around, do. Having no interest is obviously less expensive than having interest, okay? Do we have the funding in, for example, I know wastewater is a good one. Uh, we, we, the last time I looked at it, we had quite a bit of money in there five months before. And and what I'm really driving at is, do, do we need a loan? Um, uh, or do we have sufficient funding right now? In wastewater, for example, that uh, we, do we need to go after a loan, okay? Because we're going to pay interest on that loan for twenty years, no matter what, okay, if we go that way.
Uh, the, good question, it it all depends on your philosophy, because um. If we take out a loan, we are having future ratepayers pay some of these things back. Um, and if you use cash, you have taken reserves from previous ratepayers and reallocated it, so. It's really a question on philosophy at that point, if you have. Cash on hand, or if you want to take out a loan, is who you, who you want to pay that back, but I can guarantee you, if you look at our twenty-year. CIP list for for uh, wastewater, we don't have enough, we're not going to have enough cash on hand, we're going to have to take out loans.
Okay. Okay, that that answers my question, okay, thank you.
It's uh, Abersole.
Yes, uh, so can any of this money be used to hire uh, contractors or uh, outside? Um, folks, or does it have to all be used by city staff?
Oh, no, it would, it would, almost all of it would be used to hire contractors through a Public Works contract.
Okay. So could we ask for more and, you know, maybe try to fast-track some of the other projects that we've got going here, or?
Uh, well, again, what you started by uh, asking question about Councilmember Abersole is, do we have time and the staff resources? If we start to ask for too much, we just, we don't have the staff capacity to do that.
Got it, okay.
And and I would hope that this, the states. Is going to continue to fund the Public Works Board's Trust Fund Program, so. That will be something we can rely on in the future, we've relied on it in the past, and then they just stopped during the Great Recession, and now they're just picking it back up. Councilmember Heinz.
Yeah, I I I think your strategy is a good one, going for these four projects. Um, the competition for these funds is going to be fierce, if my understanding. Of AWC's repeated requests to reinstate this fund for the last three years that I know of, okay? So I think there's going to be a lot of people, particularly transportation projects, I think are going to come flooding into that thing. Seeing how transportation is underfunded by the state at this point. Uh, so I think your, your plan of going where the rest of them probably aren't is a good, a good idea. Particularly if they want to spread the money around a little bit, rather than all being transportation. So ju- just a comment, but I I think it's a good strategy.
Okay. Great, thank you. All right, well then, uh, we will return, I'm going to talk to Trent and uh. Bob Larson a little bit more, and we'll return on January or June twenty-eighth with a resolution uh, for council to support uh. One or more of these projects for Public Works Trust Fund Loan Applications.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, any last things for the good of the order? Okay, with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move.
There's, there's a second by uh, Bob and Abersole. Josh, you can pick. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, I'm sure there's no that say nays. With that, uh, the meeting is adjourned, I hope everyone has a great evening, thank you.